Welcome to the September seven, two thousand twenty-three, meeting of the Romeo Planning Commission. We begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. And where's the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in all, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Cindy, let's do roll call.
Hey, Stegner.
Here.
Webb is excused as well as Hall. Hale?
Here.
Justin Parker.
Present.
Bill Parker?
Yeah.
Fowler?
Here.
Grandstaff?
Here.
And Minton?
Here.
Okay, we move on to approval of tonight's agenda. Make a motion, we approve the agenda. Seconded by Bill Grandstaff. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Approval of the meeting minutes from July sixth, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll make that motion. Second?
I'll second.
Motion to approve the minutes from July sixth. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. Public forum. Anybody have anything to say? There's no public. So, we move on to new business. Megan, would you like to tell us about capital, the Capital Improvement Plan?
Good evening. So, I apologize for a little bit of information overload, but I wanted you to fully understand and give you examples of everything here. So, basically, part of the planning commission's duties are to have and create a capital improvement plan. I gave you a couple examples, one from a village and one from, the other one I don't believe is a village, but I liked how you could, I liked the example where it literally broke down the line items and how much money they were gonna spend on it. You can get very detailed on these. So that's why I had the two different ones in there, just to give you examples of what this could be. And then, from the Michigan Planner, Planning Association, I gave you that article, basically that whole thing. It just so happened that it's talked about exactly what we were, our focus was. This was the two thousand twenty-three edition, so it just fell right in line. So I felt like that had a lot of good information in there for you guys. About halfway through that, there's a page, it says, "Apply Today," and it has a logo with the MIC on there. That's the Michigan Infrastructure Council. That's the course that I took when I first came into office that really spurred a lot of this asset management and understanding of how to do this. And so if anyone's interested in also taking that course, I would love anybody on any board who wants to take that course to jump in with me on that. And then I included it for you, the email of my conversation with the Michigan Association of Planning. Amy is my, was the contact, explaining the course. I gave you a printout of what the course is called, the Capital Improvement Program, and that little bit of synopsis there. And then you can see the breakdown, their quote, basically. So just to do the workshop is twelve hundred dollars. And then it's twenty-five dollars per handout. They did twenty-five. I mean, we would essentially have whoever comes from our board, any of our boards, really. I would love it if even we had our council there, ZBA, I mean, DDA, anybody who wants to come, learn a little bit more about this, would for sure love to have everybody. And then we do have to cover their mileage. So that came down to just under nineteen hundred dollars. The thing that we can do, though, is we can open this up to other communities and make this an open forum, and that will help offset the cost. They would have to obviously pay their own twenty-five dollars for their handouts, but then we could also charge either a group rate, if it's, say, it's Washington Township, and we could just charge a regular, we could say, "Hey, let's split it," however we want to do it, but do a group rate. And then that way, it offsets our costs. But either way, you could also choose just to do us, our community, so that the whole focus of that two and a half hours is focused on any questions that you have and understanding how to step this forward better. We made sure when we planned the budget to put extra money into the Planning Commission to cover these costs, so that don't, so the money's there in the budget. And then I know Karen, you had a flyer, a really good one added in there, too.
Yeah, I just, right, just basic information, just to help explain exactly what it is, but it's just, it's a lot more.
Yeah, sorry, I'm sorry. I just like to be very thorough to cover any questions anyone might have. So then, on the cover sheet, we have some dates that we can choose from. If none of these work, we continue on till the next month till we find dates that work for the majority of the board. I realized that I didn't put September on here. I just have dates. So this is September dates, Tuesdays and Wednesdays. And we could also do a Saturday if that was what everybody wanted. So, I don't know if there's any questions for me.
I've got one. Is it the Planning Commission, are we going to have the council involved in this? Or what is this going to encompass?
Well, that's what, part of this, just doing this program, is learning all of that, how this works, what are the steps, who should be involved. When it comes down to it, in just making the Capital Improvement Plan, that is the Planning Commission, very similar to our master plan, where we do work hand in hand. However, the heavy lifting is done here at the Planning Commission. When it comes to capital improvement plans, what it is, is setting, setting, how should I say it? Years, you're forecasting for years in the future, planning with the infrastructure of what needs to be taken care of when. You might have some big-ticket items, and you might have some low-ticket items, and you go, "Okay, well, we'll do the, we'll do the smaller ones first." However, the risk and the potential for, I forget the word, how bad it could go, say, if you have a water main break, you then need to take that into consideration also. So you don't always necessarily just check off the lower, the lower-priced items first. You have to look at everything. And what this really does is take, tries its best to take the politics out of planning for the infrastructure of a community. We do realize that the politicians do appoint the people on the Planning Commission. However, because you aren't, you don't run for election, you don't have to do that, your focus is solely just the community, not based off of any sort of, "Will I get a vote or not if I make this choice?" So the plan or the intent in putting capital improvement plans in the hands of the Planning Commission is to take as much politics out of it as possible.
Will there be public involvement in this?
We can involve public. I don't see why we wouldn't. But when it comes to just this training course, I would like to just keep it to all of our boards.
I mean, I'm talking about that, when it comes to the heavy lifting part.
Yeah.
Would we include public, you know, information or involvement?
I think that's key to planning this sort of stuff. Things that could be put into the Capital Improvement Plan could be items that don't exist yet that the community does want, and so you're gonna need to put that in at some point. So yes, community input is vital to it, but also you have to think of just basic infrastructure and what we have, buildings, vehicles, sewer, all of that sort of thing, streets. We need to realize that we have these great-grand new streets and no plan really to take care of them. That's something that would get put in here. But basically, this is just the seminar to teach us what the next step is forward and how to do this.
And then we had someone from, was it the state? I can't remember, talking about how much money we save doing the roads, like we're doing now, in advance. How much it costs if you wait, and as opposed to doing them now. Do you recall what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
You just want a consultant, an engineering consultant, to lay it all out?
Yeah, I forget what group came in here and talked to us.
It was the same presentation.
I'd say, "Our consultants."
The year before.
Yeah.
Basically talked about the scoring of the roads and
Right.
you get to them before they get to
A level.
A level. It's cheaper just to do, quote-unquote, a mill and fill than it is to do a full reconstruction.
Right. And that's where it would behoove us to start annually, whether we choose yearly, that might be a little overkill, every two or three years, doing our PACER study. As soon as we get these roads done, we need to do an initial PACER study so we can set the bar of where the roads are at, and then you do that, however we choose, yearly or every two, two to three years, and then we can know how fast they're declining, which ones are declining where, and start the focus of the care in those areas.
Does the DPW have any estimates as, or data as to the underground stuff, what's aging and what really needs to be replaced? Because certainly that would, that should have been a major consideration of even doing the roads. If you've got water and sewer lines that the guys know
Right.
are already gone, then why in the world are we?
And they have been, and they are being taken into consideration with the work.
I didn't know. So that, that to me would be kind of much of what you're talking about.
Right. And we took care, I'm trying to, what's the name of the, the grant that we got through our wastewater treatment plant?
Arco funds?
No, we did it two or three years ago. It's escaping me right now. But the state gave us a lot of money. We did a
We camered all the sewers.
Right, right. So we have a good baseline and understanding of where they're at. Currently
Some of them are two hundred years old.
Yep. We need
That's our baseline. We know that.
Yeah. And we need to start planning. They will start collapsing at some point, and we need to start planning for that.
So I mean, it's, you're talking, I mean, if this is all for capital improvement, you're talking different budgeting items like enterprise fund, general fund, every line item?
We have, we essentially don't have plans.
Yeah, that's what mine is. So we don't do this now? We just do it on case by case?
We do a yearly budget, and we go and we plug holes, and we say what's breaking right now, and we react. And I really would like to get us to a point where we don't react anymore. We take the control back, and we have the funds set aside because we will need to react until you get to a point where you're a step ahead. But we can't get there if we don't start planning somewhere.
I agree with you.
Like our village hall.
It's a heavy task.
Yeah, don't even get me started. Another quote came in for village hall windows today. Don't even get me started.
Windows are really expensive.
Well, and they're literally, they are, our windows, the glazing is falling off, those panes are about to fall out. We can't go another two to three years without addressing our windows, and it's not cheap.
Saw, Saw Grant.
Thank you. Yes, the Saw Grant. That's what I'm We need to figure out what dates work best for everybody. I don't know if you want to then email Cindy later. We can all land on something. I would love it if everyone could show up, of course. My thought is I want to ask them if we can video it in case somebody can't come.
It's like a seven o'clock meeting kind of thing?
We, they can start at six, so six and, six and later, and it's two and a half hours. So if you guys want to start at eight, you're done at ten thirty. Depends on when you want to start. And again, Saturdays are an option.
Is it ideal to have, like you were saying, the council also, and looking at these dates and knowing the council's not meeting to the day before the first one, could we look at potentially next month and go from there?
I mean, to piggyback on that.
The council meeting?
Yeah, these were just, I called Amy. I said, "Give me the dates that we can work on for this month," and threw some out at you.
Just to piggyback on that, does like, at, like sewer and water, do they have like a list of all the sewer lines in the ground and the age of them?
We have maps and all of that sort of stuff. Now, when it comes to the age of it, I'd have to, I'm sure somebody has it somewhere.
Like you were saying, the Saw Grant went through everything, so we hopefully have something.
Most of those are replaced when the roads get done.
Well, that's all stuff we'll have to dig into once we get into this capital improvement plan. We don't have to hash out.
Right now, we just need to figure out when we want to have our seminar.
Yes, let's plan the seminar. Let's get this done. Someone's gotta do it, and it's gonna be us, so.
Yep, yep.
We don't, you don't need a motion from us or anything. You just need dates.
Yep, but let's just wait then, if we want to wait for council, we'll come back with dates again for, let's say, October.
For October?
Yeah.
Okay.
That way we get the most buy-in and everyone's understanding where we're at.
All right, so we're gonna wait for Megan to give us dates in October.
Yep.
We're all gonna come to the conclusion that we need to be there.
Best effort, please.
No, this isn't, this is
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, President Posnansky.
Okay, under new business, Karen is gonna talk to us about permitted uses in the CBD.
So Cindy informed me that the village clerk would like the Planning Commission to look and address the following issues. There are three issues. Two of them, I did not bring any materials to look at tonight, but the first issue was no use of the alley without board or trustee approval and event permit. Issue number two, which I brought some materials on for, is vendor merchandising, and outdoor seating cannot exceed the width of the actual business. And the third issue is if outdoor seating, businesses do not have the right to limit the seating to just that business, seating is open to any and all of the public. So in your, I looked through the ordinance, and at least for the item number two, the vendor merchandising, that is covered in the zoning ordinance under section four-six, four-seven, outdoor merchandising and sidewalk sales. And I thought that the best location to address that would be under item number five. No outdoor merchandising shall encroach into an established road right-of-way or, and then the added language would be, or beyond the width of the individual storefront. Now, that would just address the merchandising and not the seating, but if that is an issue, I think that is language that the Planning Commission might want to consider adding. Approach the clerk, and the clerk can grant them permission to use part of the sidewalk for seating. But they have to provide a specific plan and whatnot. I don't know what the, I'll have to talk to Catherine and Cindy to see what the full extent of the seating, as it sounds like some businesses are just offering a bench or some seats for their patrons to sit there, and, you know, people think, "Oh, this is just a public bench. I can sit there." And the store owner comes out and says, "Oh, this is actually for my customers," so there's a bit of confusion. I don't know how we want to exactly address this, but this is, I'll have more materials on this next meeting. And then, no use of the alley without board or trustee approval or event permit. Is that part of merchandising, Cindy, or just loading or seating? Do you know exactly what the extent of that was?
For the alley?
Yeah.
Seating.
Just seating? Okay.
I don't see it in here directly, but I thought the outdoor seating was limited to restaurants, lounges, or similar uses. It didn't say anything about the outdoor seating being used for any other type of establishment. And then that seating had to maintain a five-foot clearance, which brings in some questions on the north. West side, is that clearance from the road or clearance from the first curb? Because you have a step down there to consider. And then for the thing that we were, the section we were given tonight with the red beyond the width of the individual storefront, that talks about a minor in-and-out merchandising and service, which may be permitted. So what defines a minor in-and-out merchandising? Where's that definition?
I don't believe there's a definition.
Because that, to me, would consider something different than having your whole store out front.
Right. Or sidewalk sale.
And that would then be different from seating, because it's not seating, it's merchandising. So if we want to also then look at limiting the seating from expanding past your storefront, that would also have to be limit, put in, in the seating area then, right?
Right, yeah. So basically, to address the seating in the alley, that's going to have to require a lot of new ordinance language, I believe.
Yeah.
So I'm just, this is just a heads up. This is just the first phase, but this, these will be items that we're gonna be addressing, probably more in-depth at the next meeting. But I was also trying to see what Planning Commission's opinions were on this, any thoughts, feedback, suggestions?
The part that sticks out to me is that this is provide annual seasonal outdoor seating. Like, this stuff stays up through the winter. I don't know which part of that's seasonal. So it's, like, so they're supposed to apply annually to do this? Is that how I read this? So like, under section, under, under, where are we, D?
D.
All the way at the bottom, it's restaurants and lounges and similar businesses, which are going to provide annual seasonal outdoor seating, must submit an application. So is it, if it's annual, so are they, do you apply annually, or do they apply once, and it just lasts?
My interpretation is that if they're gonna have seating out at some point during the year, when they apply and they're granted permission, so long as their seating plan does not change, it's considered to be ongoing perpetually.
The guys with the fences, and I assume they have to have the fences for the LCC, those things are permanently installed.
They are affixed to the easement, yeah.
They're in the question, they're permanently, they're there all the time.
Right.
Because it's inconceivable they're gonna take them up and down.
Right, and I think the restaurants.
And if you're serving, unless you're gonna create a social district, which I think we've had discussions about, then you have to have that for the LCC.
Right, you have to fence it in. I'm just wondering if it's supposed to stay or if it's supposed to go.
You're not gonna take them up and down. I've been in a number of communities where you'll find that the seating is provided for the patrons of, of Justin's Cafe or whatever. And it's right on the chairs, benches, what have you. Where if someone wants to restrict the use in it, and they, they literally just print right on. This is provided for the Mittens Cafeteria.
Yeah, I see your point.
If, if, if you want to limit it and then put your, your business name on it, that you're providing it for your patrons, and otherwise you're up there for the whole community.
So, just, just 'cause I'm gonna question, if I get takeout from the office pub, or I was gonna order food and there's no seats, I just get takeout, can I go sit in Younger's patio and eat my food?
I don't know.
Because that, that's basically what that would be.
I don't think you can, because they pulled their permit for that space, right?
That's what we're talking about, yeah.
So I don't think the question is with Younger's and the office pub and sushi restaurant. I think it's the ones that are in front still in there.
Well, it's public and private property.
Right.
When it's set out on a public property, they cannot say
Right, you can't go there.
That's now public property. That's kind of what it's
So you're saying when it's not attached directly to the building?
Yeah. So like, you'd go to, you go to Main Street and get a coffee or whatever, but you could sit there with your office pub at it, those tables that he put out there.
So now if they were, if it was attached to his structure, maintaining a five-foot clearance?
If he wants to limit it, put it, provide it for the patrons of
But he can't put it in the public, public domain. He can't put it out in the public and say, "You can't sit on the public sidewalk on the table I put there."
If you see it there, your tendency is not to sit there. If some person had to clean that up, some person wants to sit there, so be it. I mean, it's
It's, it's not a problem until someone comes out and says it's a problem, and it becomes Megan's problem, because I, it's his name, John, that owns, yeah, that owns Main Street. So if he came out and yelled at me for sending my Chinese, then obviously I'm gonna be upset, and it's gonna create an issue. Not that that's gonna happen, I'm just using an example.
And I guess what, what determines, you might know, you've had buildings, what determines public and private then? Because my understanding, the CBD, the front of your building is the property line. Sidewalk is not private.
Theoretically, it's different on both sides of the road.
That's correct.
The southwest side, it's at the building front, but on the northwest side, it's not.
On the south, on the northeast side.
Northeast.
That would be in front of the junk shop and Stevens Building.
Yeah.
I believe, and Cindy could correct me on this, that there's six feet of property which is privately owned in front of those buildings.
I think it's the same.
I've owned two of them, and I know I paid out of my own pocket when they redid the sidewalks, because it was private property.
I think the Masonics, the same way, the Masonic side, the same way.
I, I don't know about that side of the street. I do know on the east side, there's six feet or so of private property there. Just by the way, I know that.
So if we just restricted outdoor seating, or we discussed it, to private property, no public seating or outdoor seating?
Because that's, then the office, the Yoracoba, and
Youngers.
can't have their
Then they lose it.
little things out there.
I mean, if they, if they change it at this point, then maybe. If it maintains the same layout, same structure, and it doesn't need to be reapplied for, I mean, how else do you keep it fair? You know, if you're gonna allow someone else to maintain that and not maintain a five foot from your fence to the curb, how do you justify that, not allowing any other restaurant type of establishment as restaurants, lounges, and similar businesses?
Right. Anybody basically serving food.
Serve or provide seating, yeah.
Right. You don't.
Well, we had a discussion. We're not doing anything. Let's move on from this.
Well, yeah, but I'm just saying, you know, there'll be, I'll have to look elsewhere in the ordinance, too, because I'm sure they're in, maybe not just, it's probably not just gonna be in zoning. It might be elsewhere in the village code, or if we, if, if the village wants to state that, you know, any seating provided in the public domain needs to remain available for public use, then all that language needs to be updated, so.
You've got to leave the liquor places with the fences and
Well, we're not, we're not talking about that. We're not, we're not talking about removing fences or restricting anyone from having outdoor seating. It just needs to be understood, if you want to provide it, the public can sit there. I think most people, like someone said, when they're going to a restaurant storefront, or passing a restaurant storefront, most people assume the seating is for patrons. But in theory, if I was taking a walk and I just wanted to take a rest and sit on a seat, the owner can't come out immediately and say, "Hey, you gotta leave if you're not a patron." I mean, that's the issue, because I think that's the issue that's coming to the village.
That's the one we hear.
Yeah.
And we don't have anything in the code at the moment that addresses either side. So if we want to make it clear, look, if you're having outdoor seating, just letting you know there's the risk that it's out in the public, and anyone is available to sit there if it, if the seat's empty, so.
I guess, then do we discuss if it has to be attached to, or can it be disconnected or separate from? Like, main, like, the coffee shop, right? They, they've got the gap in between the business and the seating.
Right.
Well, now there's one in front of rolling stream. There's planter boxes on the sidewalk in front of that.
The way I read it, isn't permitted.
Right.
Right? Because it's not a restaurant, lounge, or similar business.
So they're providing seating for the general public, period, end of statement.
But it's not permitted.
But it's not permitted.
That would then fall, and then, I guess, legally, what happens, what happens if that bench or seat breaks, it's left out there for public use?
That is not the only business in downtown right now.
Oh, I know. We can name a couple.
Places where people, they're putting chairs out with the, I personally like that when we, my wife and I go doing whatever it is we do when we're wandering around that I've got someplace I can sit and read, that I don't have to tolerate whatever's going on inside that store.
The DDA did a great job of installing all the public benches throughout town for the, for the seating purpose.
So not to sound frivolous, but let's say some of us are boozing it up at Younger's on the sidewalk, and some Girl Scouts selling cookies wanna sit down in the corral there. on the sidewalk, and some Girl Scouts selling cookies wanna sit down in the corral there, is that a problem?
Well, that's considered private then.
I mean, you gotta have it both ways?
That's, that's something we'd have to look into.
Sit up.
I mean, I don't know if we're making a mountain out of a bill, I think it should be discussed, and I think it should be uniform across the board. And if we're gonna say it's attached to the buildings, you can have certain type of barriers, and these are the type of barriers that are permitted, so that we don't end up with a hodgepodge of, you know, picket fences here, or, you know, vinyl fencing over here.
I mean, it says it has to be approved. The current standing is that it has to be approved.
Yeah, at the moment, if anyone wants to do outdoor seating, they have to go to the clerk, submit their plan, and she has to approve it.
Yeah, so there's no, there's no other, but there's no other guidelines, and the clerk had asked for there to be more specific guidelines in place, and that's why she sent it here, for us to toss around and come up with something.
When she wants more specific guidelines, what does she want?
You're gonna provide more information on this?
Well, does, the, basically, she wants us to address no use of the alley without the board's permission and an event permit. Uh, vendor merchandising and outdoor seating cannot exceed the width of the actual business, and if outdoor seating, and if there is outdoor seating, businesses do not have the right to limit the seating to just those businesses' patrons.
I mean, I have a, I have a really offshoot thing with the alleys, I mean, which alleys, improved alleys, alleys in the central business district?
CBD alleys.
CBD alleys.
Well, the one next to Main Street is a closed alley.
Right, it's not functional.
It's not functional, and he puts places for people to sit there and.
Right.
Do whatever it is they're gonna do, what's the problem?
Next to the sushi place, there's an art installation in the alley.
Right.
It's, it's not functional.
So I guess if it's outdoor seating, does it maintain the five foot, I think, is that what, I think it said five foot somewhere in what I was reading, maybe I made that up in my head, but.
I, I think we just need to get more information, a little more research, get back with us, we can sit and bounce. Excellent idea, Bill.
Yeah, let's move on to, uh, whatever else you'd like.
Thanks, Karen.
We could have a lot of what is, let's.
Yeah, but if we don't have a discussion, why even put it on the agenda, right? So.
Um, so, in your packet, um, Cindy provided the, uh, the most recently approved fence regulations. Basically, the, this last season, we had a lot of fence issues and questions come up, mainly pertaining to corner lots, and there were two big issues. Um, and a lot of it has to do with, uh, what our building official believes that the, and, what the intent was the first time that this language was passed. Um, or last time the language was passed, so, um, typically, when someone has a corner property, the side yard that is facing the street and your front yard, both of them are usually considered to be, you have two front yards, um, because you're on a corner. Um, the way the fence ordinance is written, um, it says a corner lot, a lot with a street abutting, it's required front yard and at least one required side yard. And that definition is fine, a lot of communities have that similar definition. Um, but when it comes to the fence height of the fence on the side yard facing the exterior, the building official believes that it, but if you have a, the way the fence, the ordinance is written now, whatever lot you have facing your front yard, it has to be four feet in height, if you have a fence along there. And he believes that your exterior side yard, if you have a corner property, should also maintain that four feet in order to help with corner clearance. Um, a lot of communities have adopted language like that, that's a really common thing that most communities have adopted. Um, but the way the language is written right now, you could have a six foot privacy fence on your exterior side property, so long as um, you meet that corner clearance triangle.
Clear to you, yeah.
Um, and so there's, he believes that there's a conflict in what the language says and what was originally intended. Um, and then the second issue is, if you live on a corner property, if you were to decide to get a, um, fence, um, around your property and around that corner, um, as long as it's a non-obscuring fence, you do not need to meet corner clearance. And what non-obscuring basically means is, if your rails don't exceed three inches, and the width between the rails is three inches or more, um, and the building official believes that the original language should have not necessarily just said, um, no obscuring fence, um, can be located in this triangle, he believes it should be that no fence should be in this triangle, regardless whether it's obscuring, not obscuring. Um, again, this is something where it's fifty fifty, whatever community you're in, some communities, they don't care what kind of fence you have, they don't want anything in that corner. Other communities, they will allow for this non-obscuring fence, where you can kind of see through it. Um, so the, these are two items that the planning commission, we need to address it just to make sure that the language is clear and what the village, uh, wants. Um, so, yeah, I mean, corner clearance is a safety issue, that's why it's in the zoning ordinance, we wanna make sure that we're not missing something, um, to help clarify or strengthen that, but, um, so these are two issues that the planning commission can discuss, and decide which direction they'd like to go.
I would have just, on a corner lot, if it maintains the triangle clearance, I think it was twenty, twenty and twenty, I don't see a reason why you couldn't have a privacy fence along your side lot, as long as it maintained the one foot from the sidewalk.
A six foot privacy fence. He, a lot of, oh, no, that, no, you said privacy fence, that's fine, he believes it's the height of the privacy fence that's the issue. The exterior side should be four, to help with the corner clearance issue.
Yeah.
Where, um, right now, you can have a six foot privacy fence.
So right now, you can?
On, on your exterior side.
As long as you maintain the twenty feet from the intersection, or from the su- the sidewalk intersection.
And you can't have a, a six foot fence in your front yard.
When you, when you pull out on Morton, Justin, and you get down to St. Clair Street, tell me that the fence that's around the cemetery isn't blocking the view of the idiots flying over that hill.
I mean, the metal pieces really aren't, it's the big brick that's, that is.
You have to pull your car as far out as you legally can, and, cause I do it every miserable day, and you cannot see around that damned corner.
I'd have to change too, cause I think village-owned stuff is excluded.
You're right, yeah, village-owned fences.
Well, I mean.
That is the worst example in town of a fence that shouldn't be where it's at.
Prospect in St. Clair, there's a bush that's not even a fence that you can't see around, period.
But that's, that's also defined in here.
Yeah, you can't see around it, but.
Yeah, that's.
To, to speak to part of what Ms. Karen said about, most communities have side yard setbacks and side yard fence restrictions, those are also modern communities with modern lot sizes that add twenty-five feet to accommodate people with side yards. I speak passionately about this, cause I own a corner yard, and I have a sixty-six foot lot, and so does my neighbor, and so does the next guy, because this community was platted over a hundred and fifty years ago. We don't have modern setbacks built into a hundred and fifty year old language.
So I'm saying, I don't think.
We don't have it.
I don't, I don't mind that.
If that wants to be implemented against things that are gonna be site planned, and condominium plat affected, where you can build it out that way, and force the new condos coming in to do stuff like that, that makes sense. But having someone with a hundred and fifty year old lot conform to a twenty year old idea, just doesn't work to me. Because if you look at, I mean, there's a bunch of people here who do construction, if you look at a new plat, the corner lots are all twenty-five to thirty feet wider to accommodate rules like that. But really old lots are not. They just aren't.
The issue is clear view for cars, when, when you're getting to a corner lot, that's really what we're talking about.
Car, cars, pedestrians, kids on bicycles, I mean, I live in an older community too, and as a, as a parent with two toddlers, it's, it's terrifying going out sometimes to certain corners, cause you just can't see what's, they can't see us and we can't see them until you're right there. But, um, you know, as Mr. Hale said, um, you know, you, we have to find some kind of medium. But I guess the issues were more so the fence height on the exterior side yard, that is a concern. Um, or there, there, there's a conflict of interpretation of what it means, cause when I read it, I don't see that there's a height, there's no height there. And the building official has said that the intention was, there was to be a four foot height.
Yeah, rules don't have intent, rules have language.
So what you're saying is we need to amend this in order to, and, and put in there a four foot height, or a two foot?
If, if the planning commission believes that that would behoove the community.
I don't see that as a problem, really.
On the exterior side.
I'd disagree with doing that.
I would, I would, a hundred percent.
I disagree with doing it.
If it, if the twenty foot site clearance is maintained within the front corner of the house, I don't see any reason, you can't come off the front corner of your house on a side lot and maintain a six foot privacy fence, as long as you're not impeding into the site, the twenty twenty.
I mean.
And then you could even taper down to the typical picket fence that you see in front of every house, so if we're gonna, say you can't have it on the side yard, on a corner, why are we allowing people to put it along their front, front walk?
I guess my.
Cause you're then impeding site views from driveways.
Yeah, my, my example is a privacy fence would be to shield my children from people parking on the side of the street and staring at them. Four foot doesn't stop anything. But that's the, and there's, and currently, well, what ha- was happening previously, was that those people had to go to the ZBA to explain why they needed a privacy fence on their side. And they were being granted occasionally when they would come in, there's people with pools who put them in their backyard when they had side yards, because this was being enforced without that language, to go to the ZBA. I'm not incorrect in that, there were, people were coming in prior to me being on the ZBA, saying, hey, I need a six foot fence in my side yard, and I'm like, that language doesn't exist, why?
But aren't pools defined separately in the ordinance?
Well, for fencing purposes.
As long as you maintain a certain footage off the property line?
Right, but this, they wanna just have a privacy fence one foot off the sidewalk, just to screen it, and not have to worry about it, who's gonna do both.
So you have a grass patio around your whole backyard, so maintain the three and a half feet from the property line.
Right.
And do what you can do.
But, under the way that this is now written, I can't go past, really, if you look at the corner, I mean, I have a house, you guys know where it is. But I can't go past towards Fremont with my fence, period, it has to go from the back corner of my house backwards, if I want it to be sixteen tall.
That's, that's what I'm saying, I understand.
So I lose half of my yard to a rule that doesn't affect most people in a community where it wasn't meant for it, in my opinion. Because there's, if you drive around, there's a ton of six foot fences in, in corner lots. There's a ton of them, and they've, some of them were granted with ZBA stuff, and some were just people who had them from before. But we don't have that language.
It's a big deal.
Yeah?
Everyone wants a privacy.
Right, people want privacy, and if you're saying you have a corner lot, you're not allowed to have it.
It definitely needs to be
Right.
Updated.
Well, if, if we maintain the current language, then, or if we want to clarify, you can have a six foot privacy fence on the exterior, we could add that language. Or if we maintain the language that's there, it's not saying that you need four feet, so if we maintain it, it's assumed that you could have a six foot privacy fence.
So you can have a six, you can have a six foot fence with the existing language?
Yes.
As long as it doesn't come past either front, we'll say, right?
Well, if, as long as that, it cannot be, I mean, it just depends how everything's laid out, but it can't be in the front yard, and it can't come into that corner clearance, and that's the sidewalk corner, the street corner, depending on how the block is, and your driveway.
So that's where it's restricted then, is the front, in the front. So basically, you can go off your southeast corner straight back, is all you could do.
Right, that's, well, if the, if the building official's interpretation is accepted, which I don't, I can go out to the street currently with the language.
We're, but that's what, but that's what we're hearing, is that you can do what Justin is saying, unless we change something.
Unless we limit it.
And if this, if we don't do anything, you can do what you pretty much wanna do, as long as you stay out of the, the twenty foot corner.
Right, as long as you, as, as long as you take safety into mind, and mind, and use the corner safe, like, if the corner setback is a safety thing, that's absolutely necessary.
So we do have to change wording then?
Well, if you already can't, the clear view stuff exists.
Yeah, corner clearance is there, it was the height of the, do, do we want to define the height of the exterior side yard fence to four feet? Because right now, it's assumed it could be si- up to six feet, we could have a six foot fence there. And then the other issue was for corner, if, if you have this non-obscuring fence, which is, your fence rails can't be, I think it says under def- definition, so a fence with partially obscuring site shall not be considered site obscuring if the distance or open space between the boards, slats, rails, stanchions, or balusters, which shall not exceed three inches in width, equals or exceeds three inches when measured as viewed at a ninety degree angle, so if you're staring right at it, and if there's at least three inches between the rails, and the rails don't exceed three inches, then that's considered not obscuring. And if you wanted to put that right on the corner up to the sidewalk, you could, as long as that's four feet, um,
See, the, I do see, I do see an issue with that.
Which is, it's kind of a conflict with a cor- with corner clearance.
I do see an issue with that, cause if I'm looking at this side fence, ninety degrees, and I got clearance, and then you're going along the other sidewalk, and I'm looking there, and I've got clearance, but when your vision goes through the openings, is it then blocked by the other picket?
Yeah.
On the other fence, so that I could see an, an issue with.
That doesn't make much.
Cause, right, for the corner, it says, um.
Makes sense, yeah.
Oh, so, not, it's, um, page four, number two, it just says, no obscuring fence, except those established, maintained by the village government, uh, shall be located within the triangle for an intersection of any road, right of ways, eastments, or access drives, or pedestrian walks, at point of twenty feet distance from the point of their intersection. And the building, and I, me and the building official felt that just Nick's obscuring and just say no fence, except those established.
I mean, it's a safety.
If, um, just to maintain that safety, because someone can get a non-obscuring style, but it's still a, it's still a hazard. Or a potential safety risk.
Yeah, I mean, for safety, I don't have an issue with that.
May I ask you a question again, cause I heard you say, three inch gap between the rails and the three inch rail itself, and when you read it, I didn't hear anything about the rails.
Sorry, so, the, the definition of an obscuring fence, so it says, um, so opaque or having such qualities as to constitute a complete or substantial visual barrier to persons outside the perimeter of site, of, of a, of the site obscuring object, a fence which partially obscures site shall not be considered site obscuring if the distance or open space between the boards, slats, rails, stanchions, or balusters, which shall not exceed three inches in width, equals or exceeds three inches when measured at a, as viewed at a ninety degree angle. So, the dista- the, the open space equals or exceeds three inches, and then for the actual ordinance, it says no obscuring fence shall be within the, um, the corner clearance triangle.
Right.
Yeah.
So you could have a one by three by four picket, four, three, one, every three, gap three, three, gap three, is what this is saying.
But it also says between slats and rails, which you'll never maintain a three inch between a rail and a slab, because your slats are nailed to your rails.
Well, they just, they don't want the slats to be three, they want the slats to be more than three inches apart too.
The rails, you mean?
So what changes?
Yeah, sorry, the rails.
Wait, what? We're being asked to make a side fence height. I think, I interpret this being the four foot. Is this what your, is, is this what?
This is just the.
The building inspector wants us to say? Building inspector wants us to say?
For corner lots. For corner lots.
For corner lots, yes.
He believes that the, and the way the, he believes the way the ordinance is written right now. It's left up to interpretation. Um, because typically elsewhere in the ordinance, when we talk about, um, corner lots. It's, it's understood that you have two front yards. Your, your side yard becomes a front yard and then you have your front yard where the front of your house is. And his interpretation is, well, if in your front yard, you can only have four feet. Then that exterior side yard could also be four feet. But it's not specifically addressed in the fence ordinance. And the fact that the fence ordinance defines that your corner lot having basically a required side yard and required front yard. And it just talks about four feet in the front yard, but it says nothing about that required side yard also having to meet that four foot standard. To me, it says, no, you can have, if, if you want a privacy fence there, you're allowed to have a six foot privacy fence. Cause that's what the village allows.
It's not saying, Bill, it's not saying that, that we don't allow it. It, it's not saying that, correct?
Right, it, it doesn't say you cannot have a six foot privacy fence. And I think if we want, if we wanted our ordinance to read that, then we would need to more clearly define it.
It's not clear.
If we want to restrict it.
If you wanted to, but if.
Isn't that what it says in four right now? Not to exceed forty eight inches?
Um, into the front yard on both streets. So, I mean, that's another issue, like how, cause I mean, your front yard runs, if you wanna interpret it to your.
Diagrams next time.
Sorry. So if your front yard is interpreted to be. The, the yard from the, your house forward to the sidewalk. I mean, that would meet both streets. And your, your, your front fence, in theory, probably isn't going to go past your, uh, your house. So, I mean, that, that, it, it, it would still be considered maybe, the, the way it's written, I would still interpret that as. The, the fence that is parallel to your house.
What changes does Mike want us to make specifically?
Mike will want, Mike specifically would want it to say, no, no kind of fence in the, in the corner clearance triangle. And that the, um, your exterior side yard fence can only be four feet.
It, he doesn't want to see, um.
Which I disagree.
If there is a fence at all, he wants to see it four foot.
I don't at all.
I agree. What do we have to do?
That's basically it.
And I guess what you're saying is, so anyone else that if I happen to live on a corner lot.
That's why I'm saying we need diagrams, because you're basically telling.
Privacy is interior lots.
Correct.
That's correct.
You're restricting my privacy because, only because I chose to buy a house on the corners to the neighbor house.
Correct.
So we need to, we need to take obscuring on number two, right?
Yeah, I think everyone has agreed that just remove the word obscuring.
Street, street. You're saying you can't have a fence that comes out like this.
I would, yeah.
That's what Bill, that's what, that's what Bob Marito's asking us to say. Is that you can only have a fence that comes from this corner of the house. That's what, that's what, that's what Bob Marito's asking though.
The only place you can't have a, a fence is that twenty foot.
Twenty, twenty, but that's now.
That's it. That's the only place.
You ask what the building inspector asked.
Well, then he's.
And he's saying, he doesn't want that. He wants it only here.
Do we work for him or he work for us?
Yeah, right.
He just wants it written.
He doesn't like people saying, well, it doesn't say that. He wants us to say that.
He didn't care for it. I brought it up three months ago, four months ago.
Yeah.
I brought it before the board and then Ms. Karen said, well, it doesn't say that at all. I agree with you. I was like, oh, never mind, moving on.
Okay, so do we, do we need to change something to just to, the only limitation would be that twenty foot triangle?
Right, if we don't want any kind of fence in the twenty foot triangle, then we would be removing the word obscuring. From item number two.
Okay, then we, then I, can you bring it to the next meeting, that particular change? And then we, we know specifically what we're.
Right.
We're babbling about.
Can I add just a little more difficult to this?
Clarify.
If the house sits, we'll say thirty feet off the front sidewalk. Which we'll consider the main road, the side, you know, the front of the house. And we, they maintain a twenty foot, they still gotta be behind that other front. They can't be only twenty foot off the sidewalk if the house is back thirty. Does that make sense?
What do you mean?
Then you're allowing privacy fence.
No, that would have to go down four feet, cause that would be the front of the.
But, but if we're gonna redefine it as only the, the site clearance issue, but we also gotta define.
We need the diagrams.
Well, you can't extend past the front of the house, right?
You can.
You can.
Not with a six foot.
Not with a six foot, four foot.
It would have to go like in Andrews, if he wanted to keep going, he could have privacy just front of the house. Then he's gotta go down to four feet. That's the way the code reads right now, right?
Right.
For ten feet. For ten feet only.
Till you're in that twenty feet.
Yeah, for another ten feet. Yeah, that's just what I, yeah, again, if it's defined, written in there specifically.
Can we have a diagram with the?
Right.
Sure, I'll, I'll bring some illustrations next time.
Three, three D models.
No six foot in the front yard.
I, I don't think it's unreasonable to say that we have sketches in there.
Yeah, no.
Did you catch all that?
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you for your.
Thank you for those.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
Yeah, we got a big argument here. So just for agenda purposes, if we could put like this, cause we've already discussed in the next month, the fence, could we put that under old business?
Sure.
Just so we can define what's old and what's new and what we're currently talking about and what's actual.
Um, so then, uh, we have the flag pole discussion. And I basically just updated the, uh, draft language. Based on what was suggested at the last meeting. Defining a flag pole as a freestanding flag pole. And then updating the flag pole height to twenty feet. Um, flags fallen at night must be, sorry, not might, night, must be illuminated.
On that one, can, can that be limited to just the American flag? Cause I don't think, someone needs to illuminate their, the Romeo flag, if they're, we'll put the Romeo flag up, you know, or the, the bulldog flag. I think more specifically just the American flag.
Okay.
Doesn't item four conflict with what?
Yeah, that was the other thing I was gonna bring up, is four talks about a maximum width of twelve feet.
Right.
That should say twenty.
Yeah.
Yep.
Oh, thank you.
Should say twenty.
And I, I had suggested that if. An adjoining neighbor says, I don't care, you, you wanna put it on the property line, and they do that in writing. Then they shouldn't have to come before the ZBA or the planning commission or anywhere else, Cindy. I, I told you this.
I know.
And I'm suggesting that we add in on item three, something to the effect it says. Accepting where adjoining neighbors, uh, neighbor or neighbors have specifically in writing, agreed to a waiver of, uh, this.
Consent.
I guess then the problem with that is the property sells.
That's.
Who owns the flag pole?
The flag pole.
It's like a fence.
If, if it's not on the property line, it's, it's where it's located.
It's the next guy that has the, but also though.
My thought, and I noted on that too, would be to do something that would be similar to building setbacks. If we've got a fifteen foot rear setback or five foot side setback, I think we should go on that line. Instead of, if you got a thirty foot flag, you gotta be thirty foot in. If you got a sixty foot lot, or less than sixty, you know. You can't have a thirty foot flag. So I, I would think that if it maintain the building setbacks.
You're saying the, the, what is it, five or seven feet?
I guess then that doesn't apply in the front yard then, because it couldn't have in the front yard. You'd have to have it in your backyard.
I, I just, if your neighbor doesn't object and you wanna put it five feet from your property line. Why in the world are we making them go before the ZBA? You can spend thirty-five hundred bucks to put the flag up.
But we don't want it to fall in the street either.
Right.
Or the sidewalk, someone walking by.
I think we're overthinking it. I, I just.
Just saying if it falls in the public space like the one.
Down the street and see one that's five feet from the property.
Oh yeah, there's a bunch out there too.
And I, I have no problem with that. I think that we're overregulating. If, if the neighbor doesn't object to it and is willing to put that in writing, then that's fine. And I, so we're, what I want is, uh, is a low cost escape. And if the neighbor doesn't agree to the low cost escape, the ZBA is never gonna grant it anyhow. Let's face it. I mean, if the neighbor comes in and says, no, I don't, you know, the guy wants to spend his thirty-five hundred bucks and the neighbor is there saying, I, I don't really like this idea. That's, obviously it's, it's never gonna go past the ZBA, but if the neighbor is saying in writing, I don't have an objection to this. Then why can't they do it?
I'm fine with that being for side yards. But I don't want it to fall in the road.
Right.
Which is what, I mean, this kinda all came about.
I guess then we could argue that if your tree gets to a height where it would fall in the road, you gotta take a tree down.
Well, yes and no.
I just paid to have my neighbor's tree taken down, so.
Done that before too.
Cause I've seen it come across this.
Well, you are responsible for maintaining it, so.
I, I just, and I really don't think we have any.
You gotta maintain your flag pole.
I think we should take the industrial area out of this, period. There's, half those factories out there already have more than one flag and they're more than thirty feet tall. If we're gonna tell Ford Motor Company to take down two of their flag poles and they wanna put up fifty footers, drive down Mound or Van Dyke. And God, half the businesses have more than thirty foot flag poles and more than three of them.
Then would they be grandfathered in and we're just saying for?
Yeah, but the, it's the industrial district for Pete's sake. It's not, it's, that's the only place I, I don't care what those people wanna put up on their flag. If they wanna say their ISO, was it two thousand or something? You, you see that, very commonly ISO two thousand compliant or, and then there's another phrase and they put it, it's obviously a flag, but so what? Why, why is the Romeo planning commission getting involved with telling them they can't do it? Or that they gotta come before the ZBA in order to do this? I, I just don't understand, we all know where the industrial district is. Period.
I think something should be spelled out. As far as the maximum flag size, I think that should just say per manufacturer's specification. Cause I think most of these issues relate back to the huge flag that got put on the gas station in town. It was oversized, it hooked onto, we'll call them overhead obstructions, which we should talk about. And it blew down and came down right across the ban, the main intersection.
But that has nothing to do with the industrial district, Justin?
And I'm just saying, in general, should we be defining many of this? A lot of this or just putting some basic parameters on, follow manufacturer's specifications? Or manufacturer's specifications. So why are we even limiting, right? And then overhead obstructions.
Would you like to say something?
How's it gonna mention about the flag poles? Those flag poles are rated for so many square inches.
Right.
Per pole.
That's what we're saying.
What you should, like, I mean, if it's thirty feet, as long as they don't put too much, like, you know, duck, like they had, they had that pole, that should have been a different pole that he had. You know, it's not, he had the one flag.
He grabbed the flag from the other.
But usually like twenty foot poles or five foot flags. That's about what they're, and you can't put three or five foot flags on there though.
Right, it, that, but that's, we, we've put in here the manufacturers.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, specifications.
That's the main thing about those flag poles, is how many inches of sales off you have to compare. I've had three of them fall down on my, my properties. When people put too many, too much flag up.
If we're not gonna provide a, a low cost way for the neighbors to agree to this. I can't agree to it. I never will. I just think it's insane that we're. Uh, if they're, if, if they're in, in agreement, okay? If they're in agreement, then why in the world can't we provide in this basic document, the, the low cost alternative? Okay, fine, give me a, a written statement on that. And Cindy has covered it and we're done with this discussion.
For side, for front yard two?
If, that's where people generally put their flags.
I get that, but like you don't want it to be within twenty feet of the walk, cause that's the, or the road.
I don't have a problem with that.
No? Okay.
I, I, that's, that's reasonable.
If you're maintaining your flag pole.
Just stay, I just don't want it to fall in the road. That's, my only thing is I don't want it to fall in the road.
Okay, that's.
Cause the car's moving too fast to get out of the way. You know, you don't see it.
Saying that we can't put it in the, it's gotta be at least twenty feet back. And I, I'm not sure if saying that, but that's, is that in here and I'm just not seeing it or? Is this some other verbiage we have to add to it? That nothing shall be placed.
It is, on three, it talks about in case the height, the pole shall not be greater than the distance to the nearest property line.
That's the property line, but that, we're.
We have a front property line.
I'm s- I'm, I'm looking for a low cost exemption on the property line and backing it up from the street.
So you just want it for the side, side.
Right.
Leave that language, but add something for the side, side.
I don't know, I, I'm gonna disagree with that. I don't think, it'd be like same thing, saying, well, if my neighbor signs off me putting a six foot privacy fence, good side facing in. I can do it if they sign off on it.
So?
Which is exactly what's happened for the last twenty years at the village.
But, but that's legit? So should it even be in the ordinance then? Or should I be defined in the ordinance?
I, my neighbors put up eight prim- a six foot privacy fence and they, they're pretty sized for them and I'm the ugly. And it was there when I bought the house, you know, you live with it. That's nothing I can say about it.
Bill, probably cause the last owner prior to you signed off on it.
No, I think they just put it up. Oh, who's kidding? We, we both know they just put it up for Pete's sake. Good grief. People didn't used to get too involved in these things, so. Uh, I, I, I said, I think we should take the industrial area out of this as being something that we're regulating the size of. Height and size of their flag poles.
Then the question becomes, let's say, someone from the industrial district calls Cindy and asks, hey, we wanna put a flag pole up, what can we do?
They can do it.
But then they, if they add, if they ask questions, then she doesn't have anything to point to them, so.
Okay, the, the, any flag pole has to, you have to provide us with a, with a manufacturer's specification. But the height and the number of them, it is very common for industrial facilities. To have more than one flag and to be more than thirty feet tall.
But then do you worry about the?
No, I don't.
The clearance to power lines and overhead obstructions.
I mean, my major issue.
In the industrial, which would be more of a concern to me than, than coming down the roadway.
My major issue with a industrial district having a hundred foot, seventy-five foot flag poles, we have an airport across the road from some of it.
The FAA has some restrictions on how high you can get. You.
It's about that.
You can't, you can't just build that.
Right.
And do that.
I don't believe I've had any calls.
From the industrial area?
Not one. Regarding the flag pole.
No, the, 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 the Ford flag poles went up all so long ago that.
I think that's the only one over fifty feet in this. That's, is that the maximum, right? That's the only one.
Thirty.
Thirty. That's probably the only one over thirty feet.
Oh, I, well, in, in the township, you're gonna go across. It's not uncommon.
They're way off the road with theirs.
Better get my flag poles on before this.
But anyway, I'm just saying, it doesn't, it's not something that's brought up very often.
Okay.
Give me an exception where there's a low cost for the adjoining neighbor to agree to it and I'm, I'm fine with it.
For side back.
In residential?
In residential, yes. I don't, if, if you.
I don't disagree with that.
No. I say no. See, if you had somebody ask to make a motion to move this to the village council with some changes on it. Would we send it back to the, uh, the planner for some rewrite?
I think so.
What?
Send it back. I don't think it's ready to go to council yet.
What, then the specific changes that we're requesting are, I've told you what mine are.
Something that talks about overhead obstructions. I don't know if we should exclude industrial. Exclu-
So exclude industrial, correct?
I say that, he says you don't need to.
I don't agree with that either. I think I should, I guess I should just be in there.
I think we all agree that number four is in, is in conflict with. I think we all agree that number four is in, is in conflict with number three?
Yeah, the, the twenty-foot needs to be changed.
Yeah, it says maximum width of twelve foot.
We're saying in paragraph four, that you can't have more than twelve feet, and in paragraph three, we're saying you can go twenty.
Right, I can, I can make that change.
In every-
And like, maybe Karen, like she was saying about the industrial, maybe we just clarify, you know, whatever manufacturer, uh, you know, height would go with whatever flag they're using, just to, just for me to be able to tell them that we have something. But it wouldn't specify, you know, a certain-
Maximum flag size? You would say that it's up to the specs of the flagpole to be turned in at the time of construction?
Say if they give, they provide it to you, and you can review that, yes or no?
Then you can just remove that whole, right, columns.
What was that?
And that would limit the, you know, industrial from having a large flag.
Right, it's basically saying that the flagpole permits what size it will allow, not the language.
Yeah, per pole.
Right, per spec.
Because that's the other thing I, I thought about, is some areas you can have three poles, but we're saying you can have a maximum of fifty square feet. But is that per pole, or is that in total?
Um, per pole.
Is it, I knew if that was clarified, I didn't, I missed it.
Right.
So just those couple things.
I think you wanna add American flags in number eight, right? Just make that American flags.
Oh, I see, I think per pole. Yeah, American flags.
Not all flags flown at night? You don't even take down their Romeo Romeo, or light it up.
Did we get it all?
Karen?
I believe so, yeah.
Could you read back to us the changes we're requesting?
So, to, um, I guess to go in order on the page. So, under number three, for industrial district, sh- should we say to, to be determined by administrative review? Not necessarily capping a height on the pole? And it's up to, it's up to the building official to this, to the, say whether it's okay or not? Um, number four, um, replace twelve feet with twenty feet. Um, number eight, American flags flown at night must be illuminated. And then, would you like draft language for neighbor, the, you know, potential, I'd say, uh, na- uh, neighbor property line conflict?
Provided that, and I, I, I think Justin made the thing, it still has to be within the, uh, it's, they have to observe the setbacks.
Right, it still can't fall into the sidewalk or street.
No, no, I'm talking about, we require, what, seven feet, five feet, ten feet?
Yeah, I'll take more.
Of normal, normal building setbacks.
Yeah, the normal building setback, they, we're not agreeing that that can be waived under any circumstances.
Well, I guess it, we'd have to look at what the building setback is from a front, because then we're basically, might be saying everyone's gotta have a rear or side yard flagpole. Whatever that front setback is.
No. I don't agree on that, Justin. What I'm saying-
Well, that, that's what I, that's what I originally said, was building setbacks, which I don't think is right now that I talked it through.
I, I don't, it's a side yard setbacks, can't, I mean, there are, there's specific side yard setbacks. And it's, there's three, seven, or ten, or something, depending upon, what is this, Cindy? What's the minimum side yard setback? Seven feet right now?
Well, I think it's ten.
I think it's nine.
Nine is nine.
I think it's nine feet.
Okay, so it's, it's, that can't quote-unquote be violated.
Unless your neighbor signs off, is what you're saying.
No, not even if the neighbor signs off on it.
Well, that's what you're saying, if that's a side yard setback.
They can go to the, the nine-and-a-half foot point, and if the neighbor says that's fine, no problem. Otherwise, they're gonna have to put the damn thing in the middle of their yard.
Right.
I'm saying that's nonsense.
They go nine-and-a-half feet, they can put a twenty-foot pole up if the neighbor says so.
I don't have a problem.
Just for side and rear, not for front.
Let's, uh- And we're keeping it more, and they have to be back twenty feet.
Yeah.
So we can spell up, they, it can't be in the first twenty feet.
Yep.
I would, yeah, see, I, I would, I, I disagree on that completely.
And, um, it was also brought up to address, um, can't have any conflict with any overhead obstructions, utility lines.
That just makes good sense. You don't want it falling on a power line.
Yeah.
You just don't. Be a nice grounding rod.
Yeah, I mean, that's not just the pole itself, that would be the flag flying.
Yeah.
Also.
Yeah, you can't come in conflict.
Karen, why don't you give us some verbiage that we can then take either one from column A or two from column B and, and market, market it for a final review next time?
Okay.
We'll, we'll beat it to death again.
I think that's the one.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we will.
We can do it again.
All in favor?
Then we better push all the buildings and everything back, so nothing in a collapse, only gonna be a side flag. You know what I'm saying? Anything in the, the DDA.
No, you're gonna rewrite building.
You got it?
Yeah, I'm gonna rewrite all of that.
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
You are welcome.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second, motion before us is to adjourn this meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Everybody wanna put some money on Elias tonight?